Silsel mer gid rogui. Mar ugi liita silsel mer gau e Vice President Senetor Kwartey, ma Flor Lider e Senetor Mariur, ma kumiu rogui. Pokua smrel ti algotol silsel el alo ngedel special sesion ergit ngora order. Plaire domuar orgul.
Senetor Elcer Basilius?
Oi.
Senetor Cecil Elbel?
Oi.
Senetor Uwaiikku Wainabo?
Oi.
Senetor Brian Mlayday?
Oi, jumartian.
Senetor Sikfit Bay Nakamura?
Oi.
Senetor Edlatip Pedro?
Oi, ingat yang.
Senetor Kichey Imruel Mosau? Senetor Mark Eblau Rudim?
Oi.
Senetor Kasugi El Tapsuino?
Oi.
Senetor Andrew Tabalwal?
Oi.
Senetor Salvador Sadoy Talams?
Oi.
Senetor Meisor Nirevan Alwips? Flor Lider Elkrai Mariur?
Oi.
Vice President Esteban Chonche Kuartey?
Oi.
Mr. President Tokons Pobles?
Oi.
Mr. President, ngari akorum?
Ngari akorum? Ea senetor Nirevan ma senetor Mosau a excuse. Bodontira senetor Mariur e ngia Flor Lider gid ngora motigay du gid raurere, senetor Mariur.
Visee President, mar ugi liita silsel mer gau mar betal, ade odornun mawrele. Toba irum fara kalender gid ma mumu da adaptara perifort dayjurnan ra two regular sesion.
Si eda mosion nang dun eseganan tir ger roguil gongel du oi. Om tok. Namai, Flor Lider.
Regodonun iba irum fara agel mesetsam na President el mey mangan ngia preskam 12/34. Tiang appointment tra Nomination ra Misturang Rengil mo omenber foreign investment board. Regodari preskam 12/8. Ontia okparmen na kamnigision na departmental mey mangan isel departmental kamnigision 12/8. Tiang na Ministera State Rielsel Asia Pacific Parliamentary Conference Environment. Regodari tiwa irum 7 e mangan ngia keukna kamnigision ra hausel mey mangan isel HOD kamnigision 12/23. El Transmetal Ra House Bill 12/23/3 H2. Tiang asel budget 2026, blar rigir hausel du plenme. Bora irum 8, ndega irum 8 sending committee report. Regodoba irum 9, ndega regangar special committee reports. Toba order of the day, ndega irum 10, uktira surtuisesa President.
Surtuises. Flor Lider.
Visee President, tsera wadu, ra adbaunugul, regodamnuna irum 10, ndega irum 10, tobora irum 11 na bil kalender. Andera first reading, ngari ngia abil regamna mermadad ma ktila gal mobisaspendra kalender. Sepedepleset tegidel Senate Bill 12/38, andera first reading.
Si eda mosion nang dun eseganan tir ger roguil gongel du oi. Om tok. Namoi se, Flor Lider.
Kimi al taime President takmum da pasara House Bill 12/23/3 H2 ra otromiwe.
Si eda mosion nang dun eseganan ma don tirak plaire umriwiata itol, plaire.
House Bill number 12/23/3 H1. Bill for naqto enak teibatchet law for fiscal year 2026. Proda order sesion of the sum of 154 million 62,000. And appropriation of the amount of 152 million 862,000. From the National Treasury for the annual charter operations and special revenues. And debt service budget of the Republic of Palau. For the fiscal years ending September 2026. Regodas mulaa mo atmo krayosan ang ra blurbelau, ra eran ra 2026. Mo spera 154 million 64,000. Eul toodra 152 million 862,000. Ra usanu la gavilmenta blurbelau, orate la gavilmenta ma agel special revenue ma balsel belau. Ra eran ra mo inra September 2026. Taba irudas mulaa, viseo singa taakal President ra blurbelau, suna aneswist juniorn.
Segid sel yosang ang ra 2026. Mangan ngia senetor Sol Megakamentel girel? Senetor Inabo?
President kam sulang, malungili ta silsel mora gau, maroku senetors. Kam sulang, ate alagora megakamenta tel unified budget tra fiscal year 2026. La moduroklara hausel mey. Ma gomesa rengie, eng gora tme warugul wasea, hausa ultovda agel mal gora major policy decisions. El gukaldia al tokorak budget. Di etasame, tokoraa milegeer kuamikarel gukora di amenmentra laa. Mang wey al gora lisaksit al setel bill. Ndihanga, ti ngari ngia tril koncerna nga ge, presma ti, isuakal mal mora attention ra ulau. Akote President, eng sel budget al mora 411 mora retirees. Wey al dim nakata appropriate, dim nakal appropriate ter ngia haus. Namne strike out sel appropriation language. Mang katugokmowaya lastir al duk talmo o sika appropriation. Mang dyaksal na tingalwaseng, ngaramang gora mal necessary lurtovlar segid lurtov. Ending wey al gukald pota luthalmo mosau ter gid ra retirees mang malorngit lursel. Bolsepedalot tungiri el ang malakad luthalmo mosau ter ngira. Awan salak pastel budget tim. Namde ngi President talwasaya minimum wage mongmas ra October 1, mo five dollars. Mar employees sel ngara private sektora, regal mo sabiral mongmas audubir. Regal adra kavalmenta ngari ngia salary increase, namatyang al budget al mortir al mo omora October 1. Mang sel gukto tabadiyanges wal mora retirees, 480. Eng wey adasal guk dyakad, dyakal ekurabola omurugel mora betla. Nga malorngit lursel, bolsepedal appropriate ter sel lurtov. Number 2, koncerna nga ge President. Agiril sel mo mangkat aloner ra National Development Banks. Agel loner NDBP ngara ikaki tele bank, agel commercial banks ra Taiwan. Yakad wey yakad accelerate up payment ter ngi. Ma wey ada tungusel 7.5 million. Algul mo pay agi tegidel advance payment aktel agel loner NDBP ra banka. Mang suakalugul wasing malamo. Agakora lonel girel NDBP pay, wal makavalmenta ma pay kal lon. Namuda kasela NDBP pay kal balsel? Agel loan collection ra NDBP, ngara problem ter ngi. Mang so, sandakasel pay kal balsel ra kal lonel ngi. Lay lon outal mora, ade girel kalepta. A repayment, agel kaka ter kal loane, mangkat kal loner banka. Mang, ndisoakal mugtal bring upersel insul wasea. Suma NDBP ospeanges, eng kandatingalwasing ngari ngisel loner. El available ngara akamitira banking, el D1% ta interest ter ngi. Mang akunda silk milasel sumakata lakatanges wal mora ra ader belau. Ngari ngia other financing al available. Eng gira tal mugtalmo ngi lomesar sel eng kuratalgibl. Mari ngaranga kal lomesar ngil wasea kada. Tegida latong al ta'el bangaringin murakale wasea ndega kanierni ere do lasar sel bitang. Mang akmal ngusegil koncerna nga kal mora ulau. Tira kay President, number 3, sel social security, sel utodarma social security. Akunda sesi girel hundred dollars, ndega de fifty dollars. Ma pulngit lursel awaisen minsa Chairman Rudim, mal luthalmo mesahse. El make sure, ndega tol ngaa tamurar ader belau. Ra alsel tel budget, bolsepedal algutmakli el mo ekurabola roguil mar betla. Mang segida, igaidat tril koncerna nga, akmal mora attention ra akamiti, malorngit ange swol girel Mr. President, kam sulang.
Sulang e Senetor Inabo, Senetor Basilius?
Preskam sulang, kandangat yang. Budget al langara hausel mey. Akote ndisoakaloo for clarity, ma information nga. Ange swol taralaan namin merakamitira banking, el 1% ta interest ter ngi. Akunda singi rete clarify se, kandangarati vi mora record. El altaim, ndega aurrere la akamiti lo ba lon, mal uve ngeswol ngara 1%. Tital saudi loner 2.5 interest weight. Ongerunge, akpay mrengasulir ar adra haus. El gukti tungul mara kangester agai tegidel uriora akamiti. Akpay uve ngasulir, tme isegidel 1.7 million lurtovra ADB. Sesel dulpan 7. 7.5 million. Sesel lurtovra ADB dulpan lukogdam ar sel blairang asyapan. Segid ya pay plan bertie, opan muharawa agel balsel belau. El ngara andera debt service, ra kavalmenta girela agel roguil loner ta imant. Segid ya pay gurengasulir ti. Ongerunge, akdirekal mrengasulir ar adra haus. Sel tokorapic PUC, ngeswol mora tenki. Ababil ngela President, tadimlak lotungi sel lifeline subsidy mora tenki. El 1.7 million ar adra haus abay il lotungi. Kada direkal mrengasulir ti hursay. Ebatto kaigeke, alalsel talbill direkal botomese. Disoakal ti muigekeki, tothakal uriora, uriora lunkemiu e roguie, romesa aktial, uriora kam sulang.
Sulang e Senetor Basilius, mangan ngia udon? Diak? Diak malugil mang kubiul omdasul wase, batto kado udod, bom tautlornasa udod. Aktio ngiteng gukpor ngia, kura ngar ngi selen. De konsur ber gidel gukse, ber girela gukora, kaysa brungul dilerak, mongal duvul merakavalmenta gid. El ahe, kurenstra Inabo, eng wasin mongmas a minimum wage mong giredal olongesera tok room tarbsrir. Malsumwe si Inabo, bom dasursel 411, monglil mo 500. Bol gamplit lo ulgora 500, el akal 411 gora ngari ngia dasursel. Ar adra blu lurgit regidel wase, ngaram, 411, diakulmo 500. Visee dikmulu yara ulaga, senetor Mariur, kada direkal gora mongdasur ngi. Namode ngangod? Sumdiga ngod?
Oi.
Maria Son? Senetor Rudim?
Kam sulang Mr. President, e adi mo asan raulyo. Ndi kada gora mosau da tokorabasit ra blurbelau, Mr. President, ndiga direkal omokatka ra adra blu luleksa se. Adia sisbari raulu da, direkal maklurni ugiwa tax. Ngara kada tax raulu, ar adra blu muharau, agak taksir ade baramargi, de gukma sigra allocationu se muhara.
Visee.
Maklurnit ra akaluru, hasepodungil masatiang, kada motigil mogi, sulang Mr. President.
Saule chairman malugil omoklatkar gil? Digangod?
Oi. Kekio?
Sumdigangod, etirger gonger ti al uldasul molaa ragotlornivel du oi. Om tok. Namai, eti asain el mora chairman awaisen minsa senetor Rudim. Flor Lider.
Visee President, etbo seneksel bill makmum da pasara Senate Bill 12/38 ragotlornivel?
Si eda mosion nang dun eseganan ma plaire umriwata itol.
Senate Bill number 12/38. Bill for naqto amend chapter 82 of Title 34 of the Plan National Code. To amend the Palau Sports Commission, to revise its membership. Expand its mandate to include strategic planning for sports facilities. And extend its authority to promote sports tourism. Regodas mulaa, momlot ra chapter 82 of Title 34 of the Plan National Code. Momlot ra sel tokorar membership ra Palau Sports Commission. Mo kilugia ngara lele, girela tokorah sports facilities. Regal mo extend resetrisi el mo promotea sports tourism ra blurbelau. Regodas mulaa, viseo singa senetor Kasugi El Tapsuino.
Si eda sheduldasul molaa, ma didontira senetor suginon, dilbaske da gora kdeblomso del. Ma urible gora akamiti, botomese ngi, senetor suginon.
Sulang telegi Mr. President, malungili ta silsel mer gau ma aroku senetors. Tiang lutasul molaa, segidel malbatakasel taitol, kada taral amender sel kada motkala ra Palau Sports Commission. Tiang laasal magatmakli, ngmilkotmakli, dimlakatama ngar bohniar members, segidel commission. Namnor ngia Palau National Olympic Committee. Mang uauriora, wa, ngora magatatal dilurunya PLOC. Ending PLOC ado dengakwasing nan government organization. Ma uldasual mutel tral omkoro korte gidel commission, el mosbedel taitakadma dengakwase agel lurtodultovra amto. Amora commission, ngar commission ngara lele, guk omesa agel sports federation sel andera PLOC. Asistertir agel guk pasongasif. Direkal partetela, ade direkal mo magatatluia agel guk ngara lela, agal sports facilities. Kada direkal noransukmasen, direkal gora ngari ngia gora rawren ngara adra blu, kmasa agan andera PLOC, andera gavilmenta. Direkal mo omkatakle gidel tokoraxela sports facilities, ngaklokle la gavilmenta. Kada momkatakluk, kmaseng malwaga ra kletelela management ngar facilities. Ade direkal partetela, ade direkal mo promotea agal gora sports tourism. Kada direkal dengakwasing magtoka aradusonimir belau. Edirekal tokay agel activities sel dorular sports federation. Edirekal tral atraktra touristimir belau, moitodu diri ensura bulwad. Mang obengela igaidet, direkal sel lastel gora other related purposes. Ade direkal mo muktigal se. Ade direkal mo uauriora bengela national youth en eldebel kansel. Edirekal mesukmaseng ngari ngi guk programs al sena tokorayud. Al sena community, ma agel eldebel al sena bulu. Umgarangad align opengela tokoraknogol. Edangal mo andera commission, ngiamomkataratara udodra udopuway. Etultovdel mora commission, ogalitia despursenion mora agel guk program ngar sena community. Si eda kora digadablo mso del, Mr. President, takulangar sulang ngirela tiang.
Sulang e Senetor Suudino, Senetor Mariur?
President takdiralo, umraro singa ngari ngi galbe biras sports facilities. El al direkal gora ngari ngi yusest ti. Agosel tokodokuspe ngari ngi agelfis. Direkal gora lotakuwa, segil fisu morgeri, wangarala konful wase tiang. Aging udodun mora kamentu, wangkamenta golpart ra maintenance agal facilities. Quadi son mo segil gol lotaku. Sum aurutel commission, agi direkal gol sepedal mo. Kodenil wase malngari ngi fisu mora, tongamo kalekti wangarala, endra igidel fisu. Quadi sedi kalimu, sepela akamiti mo mesatiang, agal direkal mora munisal se, kada bengakod adresengi. Sulang President.
Sulang e Senetor Mariur, mangan ngia udon? Sumdiakangod, etirger roguil gonger ti al uldasul molaa ragotlornivel du oi.
Oi.
Om tok. Namoi se, asain el ni mora senetor suginon ngi omra, rasportser gid. Flor Lider.
Visee President, igi amnara first reading, tobora asen reading, ndega kana asen reading. Adur reading, ngari ngi segidel Senate Bill 12/13. Regeri mora, after reading, endi godwaya amnara adur abra sesion, wase bolsepedal difera axson aktial bill. Ma aneksel sesion ergi, debolsepedal buka desa gil bill atro malsel. Makmum il difera axson aktel Senate Bill 12/13.
Si eda mosion nang dun eseganan, etirger roguil gongel du oi. Om tok. Namoi se, Flor Lider.
Agiaro gawrele, drabil kalender President, etmo paan mora irum 12 ra resolution kalender. Agisel one ngara referan, makmum da omdeel sepela claire umriwita. Resolution e asain el ni mora akamiti.
Plaire umriwata itol?
Senate Resolution number 12/52. Senate Resolution confirming the presidential appointment of Misturang Rengil. To serve as a member of the Foreign Investment Board for a total of three years. Tiang Senate Resolution, mo gonger omelke da dekturil, girela Misturang Rengil. Yangmo dalsel Foreign Investment Board, kalsel ederak, tulatan kal President of Senate of Pokons Pobles by request.
Segid sel appointment tra Turang Rengil, mo kada asain ngil mora chairman ra vise minsa. Flor Lider.
Segida din imor nagreferal President, eti ang adaktion. Dolmon mora irum 13 ra introduction of bills. Tobora irum 14 ra introduction of resolutions. Etobora irum 15, President, ngari ngi imora Missinians Communication, dirigumle, ma ktila gal mobisaspendra kalender. Sepedepleset tegidel Missinians Communication 12/35. El mora andera Missinians Communication. Visee mosion, suspende place aktel Missinians Communication.
Si eda mosion nang dun eseganan, etirger roguil gongel du oi. Om tok. Namoi se.
Visee President, etkodamla places segidel Missinians Communication. Melan ta mactelmi tarabekul, adamolsepedal dinauta agel Missinians Communication 12/207. Ed mora 12/235. Dinauti, mad gora Missinians, bisdesel sepedal gora, ngari ngia kuasodakadesa, ade segidel Missinians.
Au erang, dolmoname, Flor Lider, sel sel appointment tra Turang Rengil, na ba ingurang. Ar siti dim, kada asain ngil mora senetor Inabo.
51. Manda amnami segidel sel resolution, asain el mora akamitira city vi, senetor Inabo.
Senetor Inabo.
Gidangar Missinians Business, President. Koramal utoaigal Missinians.
Michelle Enios?
Oi.
Maria, Maria Michelle Enios ngi, Senetor Tabalwal?
Visee President, mar ugi liita silsel mer gau ma reklat. Ya Michelle Enios, President, adi gangester sel filgadil ya kalender, Mistcam 12/235. Tia di, totogdi, kandela singa ngari ngi, ababiel digamnara ministera tmutu mer gidel. Walorngit regil wase da gatmakli am, omloadra ala arsel tendastori tulmo moti sel argir requirement wase. Girela ader mosisprakal sen sel, girelo ba digirinakal sen se. Se angarina ala, enyasola bodoloder se gidel, 30,000 sel mo alakaloi se gidel. Omso deto, aseng mrengalosigra sen se, ediakar ader mora yegidel posisyon, tiruspe ar. Tiagidel legal april dingilup President, etia tingilursena ipol, motatararungul, no bumi tiagidel. Tokoi, ndimblakatakwa wase, sel toltirakta tingilalakalangida, tsimsen wase. Tiagidel ngartialal, wase ngirel mor ngia ader lobadi giringakal sen se. Aulamilkotmaklo bengel, sel digitmakli alal, wase ngiredil mosisprak teacher certification. El al sils. Tiang nomrengal ordil agurulak, agitmakli, nomrengel ministera melusel mem, kada natogdiya ababiel morinwase. Anga ongerurakari, tetsepedil wase, namosepeldi ngi, kutmakli a teacher certification, kutmakli agel duul. Eo tiro tia ITI pasese semoto koi. So se agirel mor ngi, etiagidela agirel mudel. Mu kada manomolmen, otisprasen se ngari ngi ababieni, mal uven, kuto sigretir. Tiang Ministry kutmaklin mo imura teacher certification. Segidel ontila, ma minister tmutu mer git se, okmogotukutmaklin molaa. Engotjal teacher certification, ngulmo yadla kumi. Muhalakotukil ngitu. Mu tiya, et tiya disul time, ngasel tiyal dosel adala argi, ke magatatpi sel wase. Sel omorul page sering wase. The provision that requires new teachers have at least an associate degree in education. Or this subject matter is being hired unless there is no qualified applicant for this position. Tiagidetentingil ala, adilga mudel, ela al sils. Suma adamo apply a credential ngi, ngani abatselor ngi, associate degree ngi, ndingdaganakal sen se. Andil sebel hire mora posisyon, alsel emuragato uyor kutmaklin, gagega ader mor ngi ababeni. Se adil ngar ngi, tiagidagi amnargi uspe ngi. Otisprasen sen mora classroom, emlewre real la teacher certification. Et tiadi, President, tesa wadu takpin, wangartial bakatakwa wase. Ndirela Ministry kutmakli a teacher certification, ediakasen, edro tete luthalmo moti se gidela ala angar sen. E se tengoti, emuwa tengoti, kaj teacher certification, muhawalak, kuto tial longutmukri ngi. Etira maadi hire ar ader ngari ngi abalir ma alakal morakal sen se. Et tiadi, gunitwa wase, ngari ngi aklisi ra ar adra ministera Human Resources. Lospe tiartentingil ala, eh hire ar ar, endi togoya mora Ministry wase, ketmakla ureril, en ala ngade. Sel ala ngade, teacher certification. E adra ala argi, dakmurgirwase, a Ministry malmo imra gal, lorregatet tiyal lurutial kutmakli. Ogabayolngitwa wase, a Ministry education, bol dong ok, keta kutmakla urerede. Lemnar on trirel mer gid, otukutmakla urerede mora Ministry education. Mongar ilgutmakla ureril, subakrasen se, otmakla rudil mo. Se agirel omrael. Ndika kado bor se iti, e godhara ngi ditama school, e godhwa isegidel, ndega improvement mora school. Mo diakad kutmakli improvement. Tesa wadu takpid tiagid, ewil time, makmum saa minister ngirai, e otelakpid tiwase. Tiagid agirel omrael, we gotta move up, improve. Ndika kada backorder, final loop, credentials, keda ala ra atar omrael. We have to go, ra teacher certification. Se agirel omrael, egunitia lursa wase, mal amatera ugo. Omdimrosa ugo, e armeringel louruel sen se, ngaram, ndiakal gora, sa aktial ugo. A school sawa, bohniarangke. Abibay dogare, gagega gira. If we want our children to be the best they is, let's do a diligence rumar sen se. Ego stira, ange sumbolsepedal atraktarungul sen se, e rokado trirarungul.
And let's attract them. That's what I want the president to say.
Senator Inago.
The president said that the senator Tabalwal is in the house. And the minister said that he will apply for a degree. And he will be a senior. He will not be a teacher. He will not be a senior. The human resource office and the ministry of education will be suspended. And the human resource office will be suspended. The ministry of education will be suspended. And two years will be suspended. The minister said that the teachers shortage and the human resource manager in the ministry of education will be suspended. The president said that if the school is not allowed to attend the school, then the senator Tabalwal will be suspended. That's what the president said.
Senator Tabalwal.
The president said that the second appointment for Turan Rengil will be even without a high school. And the high school will be suspended. And he will be a senior. And he will be a PCC. And he will be a credential. And the ministry will be suspended. And if the school is not allowed, then the school will be suspended. And if the ministry is not allowed to run a tracking system in development. Then the ministry will be suspended. And if the school is not allowed, then the school will be suspended. And the school will be suspended. The state will be suspended. And the ministry will be suspended. And if the school is not allowed, then the school will be suspended. And if the school is not allowed, then the school will be suspended. So the system is in place. They have to put the system back in. And if the school is not allowed, then the school will be suspended. And if the school is not allowed, then the elementary school will be suspended. And if the school is not allowed, then the school will be suspended. And if the school is not allowed, then the school will be suspended. And if the school is not allowed, then the school will be suspended. And if the school is not allowed, then the school will be suspended. And if the school is not allowed, then the school will be suspended. And if the school is not allowed, then the school will be suspended. And if the school is not allowed, then the school will be suspended. And if the school is not allowed, then the school will be suspended.
Senator Inago.
The president said that the human resources director is in the house. Senator Tabalwal is in the house. And she is a senior. 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 The senator Tabalwal is the president's secretary. And she is a senior. That's what the president said.
Okay, the senator Korte said that the senator Inago will be suspended. And if the school is not allowed, then the school will be suspended. Senator Korte.
That's what the president said. The members of the senate are saying that the senators. The president. The senior is a senior. And he is a senior. And if the school is not allowed, then the senior will be suspended. And if the senior is suspended, then the school will be continued training. And the improvement will be maintained. And if the senior is suspended, then the senior will be filtered. And the elementary school will understand affirmative behavior. My behavior. So the request, the president to the senator Tabalwal to return to the house before. For two years, she will be suspended. Because she will be suspended. And if the school is not allowed, then the senior will be suspended. That's what the president said. The president said that the request will be a social benefit. And that's what the president said. And if the senior is a senior, then the senior will be suspended. And if the senior is not allowed to attend the school, then the subject matter will be suspended. And if the senior is a senior, then the elementary school will be suspended. And if the senior is suspended, then the senior will be suspended.
Senator Alduel.
The president said that the members of the senate are in the house. The president said that Mr. Leonis said that he will bring up the senior certification. And so he will be suspended. The president said that the classification will be postponed. And if the area is specific, especially the positions of seniors, the positions of nurses, the health, the positions of bullies. And if the specific occupations are postponed, then the basic standards will be suspended. And if the position is not allowed, then the specific occupations will be suspended. Especially if the senior requires even a masculine and if the basic training is not met, then the certification will be suspended. And if the school is not allowed, then the minimum standard will be suspended. And if the school is not allowed, then the certification will be suspended. Especially if the senior is a nurse or a bullies. And if the bullies are not allowed to attend the school, then the nurse will be suspended. And the nurse will be certified. The president said that he will be suspended. And the mission of the mission communication will be suspended. And if the senior is not allowed to attend the school, then the agency and the president said that if the senior is not allowed to attend the school, then the senior will be suspended. And if the senior is not allowed to attend the school, then the national government will be suspended. And if the senior is not allowed to attend the school, the president said that if the agency is the final proposer of the executive branch, then the president will be suspended. And if the senior is not allowed to attend the school, then the agency will be suspended. And if the senior is not allowed to attend the school, the president said that if the senior is not allowed to attend the school, then the performance reporter will be suspended. And if the senior is not allowed to attend the school, then the senior will be suspended. And if the senior is not allowed to attend the school, then the reporter will be suspended. And if the senior is not allowed to attend the school, then the reporter will be suspended. The agency will be suspended. The president said that if the senior is not allowed to attend the school, then instead the individual request will be suspended. The process will be postponed. And the performance based reporting will be suspended. And the additional budget. And if the president said that if the process is postponed, then the senior will be suspended. And if the senior is not allowed to attend the school, then the performance of the agency will be suspended. The official department said that the fiscal responsibility will be suspended. And the president said that some kind of fiscal strategy will be required. And if the president said that the fiscal proposal will be suspended. And if the president said that if the president is not allowed to attend the school, then the progress of the deliberation will be suspended. And if the follow-up will be postponed, then the public hearing and the line agencies will be postponed. And if the second reading is postponed, then the school will be suspended. And if the school is not allowed to attend the school, then the agency will be suspended. And if the agency will be postponed, the official department will be suspended. And if the official president is not allowed to attend the school, then the agency will be postponed. And if the school is not allowed to attend the school, that's what the president said.
Senator Alduel. Maria Inago. Senator Udim.
The president, that's right. Let me translate. The president said that the council is in the house. And it will bring in the minister of education. And the agency will be suspended. And if the president said that if the opinion is not allowed, then the opinion will be suspended. And if the opinion is not allowed, then the auditor will be suspended. And if the president said that the opinion is not allowed, then the opinion will be suspended. And if the opinion is not allowed to attend the public auditor, then the official department will be suspended. And if the school is not allowed to attend the school, then the private grant will be suspended. And if the government is not allowed to attend the private grant. And the president said that if the school is not allowed to attend the school, then the official department will be suspended. And if the president said that if the official department authorized the official department, then the official department will be suspended. The grant will be suspended. And if the school is not allowed to attend the school, then the tax will be suspended. And if the official auditor is not allowed to attend the school, then the school will be suspended. And if the school is not allowed to attend the public auditor, then the official department will be suspended. And if the official auditor is not allowed to attend the school, then the official department will be suspended. That's what the president said.
That's right, Senator Udim. The committee said that if the opinion is not allowed, then the official department will be suspended. Maria Inago. Flo Lider.
The president said that the announcement will be made.
It was a cabinet announcement.
The president said that the minister Victor is here. And he said that the senator will be updated. And he decided that the office will be moved. And he said that the meeting.
The cabinet.
The cabinet.
And if the senator is not allowed to attend the auditor.
The auditor will be suspended.
The auditor will be suspended. And if the auditor is not allowed. Maria Inago. Senator Malairay.
The president said that the members of the council will be suspended after the session. That's what the president said.
The session will be resumed?
Yes, the session will be resumed.
Senator Udim.
The president said that the house number 12-23-3-HD2 will be suspended until the 26th. And if the official department is not allowed to attend the school, then the official department will be suspended. And if the official department is not allowed to attend the school.
Senator Mariola.
The president said that the lights are on.
The motion was refused, but it was confirmed today. On top, not refused.